Okay, good evening everyone, it's uh five thirty uh exactly. I call this uh status hearing to order uh on the Department of um the Department of Agriculture uh relative to the quarantine procedures. I I have a sign up sheet and if uh those of you still wanna testify or or speak to the matter before this legislature in this committee, I'll give you an opportunity to do so. Our on our agenda this evening is the Department of Agriculture uh to present an overview of the animal quarantine procedures uh pursuant to local law and that this status hearing uh was no- noticed uh pursuant to the uh open government law and I'll certainly give the members of the public an opportunity to speak. I'd like to thank and welcome um Senator and Dr. Arlene Yamashita for being here tonight and I'd like to for the first panel call up the Director of Agriculture and the um Territorial Veterinarian Dr. Poole. I understand you indicated that you would have to leave at six twenty. Uh I also understand that some members of the audience uh also had to leave. Um can I have a show of hands to see who needs to leave sooner than? Yeah, okay. Okay, okay, we'll try to accommodate um uh those who have to leave uh earlier than usual, but I do wanna say if necessary, we'll continue these status hearings until we can get to the uh the reason why we're here. I called a uh status hearing and I'm pleased that Sarah Yamashita's joined us tonight uh simply to go over all the local laws that are um pursuant to the establishment of um just the quarantine procedures. I, you know, we, I w- I was telling uh Dr. Yamashita that at least as I can recall for the last uh eight years, uh we've been going back and forth uh with this particular uh issue. Uh and I told her the many hardships that uh Dr. Joseph has had to face over the years and he's won uh every single court case uh and his concerns before the legislature are multi-jurisdictional. Uh they involve uh other um Guatemalan Health Board, they involve um allegations and confirmed uh court rulings of uh conducting uh business is not consistent with the open government laws. But for tonight, for tonight's status hearing and based on my jurisdiction from this committee, uh we're gonna focus on all the uh quarantine procedures. Uh and so I provided you Director and Dr. Poole with the list of questions. Have you received those questions? And uh we'll just go down the list um and I'll ask you these questions and I'll give you an opportunity uh to respond. Director, I wanna start the hearing by saying that uh you may have inadvertently uh gave me an email that you were supposed to send to Dr. Poole and to um Tino, cause tomorrow night we're gonna be reviewing the indigenous fishing rights. And uh you'd indicated uh to them, you said, gentlemen, prepare for an interrogation. Uh I wanna assure you that um this is not the purpose of this hearing. Uh if you if you view it as an interrogation, then then maybe it's because there are things that um that are we're gonna ask that you feel uncomfortable to answer, but nonetheless, these questions will be asked. Uh you would provide an answer and I would give equal opportunity to members of the public uh to also testify to the relative to the questions that we provided. So I'm gonna start and I'd like to um welcome and thank the acting speaker for being here tonight. My first question is, please provide an update on the rules and regulations that have yet to be transmitted to the immun- immunohemoglobinized return Guam.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Tita Titegwe, I'm the Director of the Department of Agriculture um here in behalf of the agriculture and uh in response to your your question, the first questionnaire that you have asked, I will refer to Dr. Poole.
Good evening, my name's Tom Poole. Thank you and um I'm the Territorial Veterinarian. What we've been working on since uh November of last year, we've been meeting twice each week um for probably two hours, two and a half hours uh working on uh a hoped-for-planned um adjustment to the rules and regulations having to do with licensing of pets and stray dogs. As we all know, we've got really a massive stray animal uh dog particularly problem on Guam. Uh Mayor Montanani, the mayor of Jigo, uh has been uh the head of the mayor's council relative to this stray dog issue and so he's hosted these meetings. And we have them uh as I said, twice a week and once in Jigo and then the second meeting is always in Baragata. And we've been doing that trying to get a consensus a- and it's been quite difficult on what all we're trying to do. And we are planning three town hall meetings next month, uh north, central, and south to present these ideas to the public and to get some feedback on that. Then after that, we'll go to the mayor's council with what we think is our finished product and after we get the support of the mayor's council, then we will begin to try to uh continue on. What we're trying to do is to look at the possibility of uh really some fairly dramatic changes. We don't know, I mean, I personally don't know how the public's going to feel about these things. Uh we're talking about considering uh microchipping of pets, considering uh mandatory neutering of females, possibly males also, and possibly a differential licensing fee, excuse me, based on the uh sex of the animal. That is, an intact female would have to pay more uh than than a regu- now, we understand that if we had a mandatory spay program in effect, that there would be some expense to the public. And so we have been working with the Humane Society and we think we have a good plan to help get some financial support along those lines. Not sure yet if it would be enough. What we would hope to do, to go back to the original problem, um you know, if you'll sort of do the math on this, an intact female stray on the island uh is going to have a litter size, if you'll take an average of six pups, which depending on the breed can be conservative, then in nine months-
Okay, so that's for the uh your plan to deal with the stray population?
That's correct.
And so let's let's focus in on the quarantine, animal quarantine procedures. Can you uh give an update on an over- the overview and status of the animal quarantine procedures?
The way the animal quarantine procedures work now, when an animal comes, I mean, we've got lots of different animals, we're gonna talk about pets right now, dogs and cats, you know, it's different for cattle, it's different for everything.
We're gonna focus on-
Dogs and cats, okay. When dogs and cats come, there's basically four ways to come in. One is if you're coming from an exempt area and that would include Hawaii, Japan, Australia, New Zealand, the British Isles. Uh those are rabies-free areas that are recognized by rabies as rabies-free by Guam and by Hawaii and others. So in that case, uh you would be able to come in without quarantine and if you follow all of the steps uh to, you know, have a health certificate and proper vaccinations and that sort of thing, then the animal could leave from the airport directly and go home with you. We don't have very many of those. I I mean, I have to back up and say that in excess of ninety percent of our pet entries are military pet entries. Probably much of this is because the military helps to sponsor the movement of pets to help defray those costs. And it is fairly expensive, you know, bringing a pet to Guam uh in terms of airfare and the veterinary fees and everything else.
Do you have these um procedures in writing and do you have uh forms where where checklists uh indicate what those requirements are?
This is this is the brochure that we give to everyone that lays it all out and explains how that's done. And uh so that's that's one way um and that's not used so commonly, there's not so many people coming here from exempt areas. Um the probably the next most common way and and the best way is the home quarantine option. Animals coming here from America or from US military installations can qualify for the home quarantine. And what that requires them to do is to have the pet microchipped and FAVN tested. FAVN is F A V N stands for fluorescent antibody virus neutralization. What this does is it proves that the animal has a protective tighter to rabies. The fact that you vaccinated an animal for rabies doesn't guarantee that the animal is in fact protected against rabies. When I was stationed in the Philippines, we had an animal that had been vaccinated twice and developed rabies anyway. So the FAVN test proves that this animal is actually immune. Now what we have done is um taken a very high tighter that we require. This legislation was passed by this body in two thousand and seven, it was proposed by then Senator Ishizaki.
Well, prior to that, maybe two thousand and four, when I first um uh proposed to change the law from a hundred and twenty days to to almost uh five days if if the FAVN testing was done prior to a hundred and twenty days prior to coming to Guam.
Correct.
What Senator Ishizaki did was uh kind of tweak that law uh so that we can continue to build on this quality of life issue so that people who wanna come to Guam can bring their pets without any hassle. Uh and so that's and that's the purpose of the status hearing is is what are how are we what are we doing as a government to make sure that there's a smooth uh transition from from wherever the pets come from to Guam? And what are you doing as a department to make sure that there's a smooth uh transition of those pets wanting to leave the island?
It's much smoother now than it was, you know, in the beginning when I was first here. Uh this this home quarantine law has greatly eased, you know, the stress and strain on people. Uh and again, as I said, most of the animals that are moving are military families. Most of them qualify for the home quarantine, it's very rare that we have an animal that doesn't reach the tighter. Understand, the tighter that we're using is a very high tighter, it's double what Hawaii requires and it's basically ten times what is considered a protective tighter. And yet, most animals end up with a tighter that's still ten times higher than the one that we're requiring or at least five times higher. So it's not difficult to achieve a very high, very protective tighter. So I think the program is very safe for Guam and and it's worked very well for the for the last seven years. And so that one is the one that is used the most. The next one would be what's called a calculated quarantine. And this is for animals that are not coming from the United States or from a military installation, as is covered under the law. And these animals then would get microchipped, do the FAVN test, you know, after vaccinations and that sort of thing, and a clock starts when the blood gets to the laboratory. And a hundred and twenty days after that, assuming that we reach a protective tighter that's half as high as required for the home quarantine, it's point five international units instead of one point oh. When they, a hundred and twenty days from that, that pet can go home. And so if that pet spends that entire a hundred and twenty days in whatever the home country is, then they come and they just do five days or less, which is normally one night in quarantine and then they go home. If they come here before the hundred and twenty days are up, then they have to spend some number of days and that's calculated and that's why it's called a calculated quarantine, based on when the blood arrived at the laboratory. So we don't have very many of those either, we just don't have so many people that are that are coming from these sort of odd other countries, but but some. And then the last one is the full a hundred and twenty day quarantine. And sometimes that happens when people just have an emergency move, you know, they just get notified, bang, we've we've gotta go, our dog's not even vaccinated, it's not anything. They can still come and go straight into quarantine and do the hundred and twenty days. And as you know, that's the way it used to be on Guam for, you know, since our nineteen sixty-seven rabies outbreak for a long time, we just had a hundred and twenty days, that was it. And so these are much more friendly, I think.
And for those pets that have to go to a quarantine facility, uh how many quarantine facilities and programs are there on island?
We have two. We have uh the one, the the oldest one is the Harper Valley kennel that was opened in nineteen eighty-three and uh it's it's a very large kennel, has uh quite quite a lot of space. And then Anderson Air Force Base built one at about three point two million dollars and it's much smaller, um but a very nice facility. And they do again, most of the business because most of our entries are military and they all go to Anderson.
And how many uh facilities are you were have applied for approval?
Uh there's only one additional one that's ever applied and to at least since I've been here and uh that's uh Dr. Joseph's, you know, place there on uh there in Tumanyi that he's wanted to. It's, the problem that we've had with that is that it hasn't, uh he hasn't come close to meeting the the law as as this body wrote and that's really our only interest, Senator, is enforcing the laws as as they've been written. We we don't have, none of us are in the business, none of us are-
Can you tell us specifically what those laws are, Dr. Poole?
Oh gosh, it's nearly twenty pages, it's uh I've got, I mean, this this is it, it's it's quite a lot. Um but you know, some of the real sticking points for for Dr. Joseph uh is that for one thing, uh the law requires him to have a uh permit from DPW for a quarantine facility. As it turns out, his facility was originally a a family home that was converted into a veterinary hospital, I think it was a business of some kind before that, but he never got an occupancy permit or anything to make it a veterinary clinic or a certainly not a quarantine facility. And so this was a big problem that he had with DPW. DPW, you know, ordered him to, you know, submit the request for that in order to get the occupancy permit. He didn't do that and after a period of time of trying to get him to do that, then DPW turned it over to the AG's office for enforcement, that is, to force him to close his veterinary hospital. Now, from that day until now, to my knowledge, the Attorney General hasn't done anything about this. I called the Director of DPW yesterday to make sure that there had been no change uh since the last that I knew of this and uh he said that no, everything is as it was, there's still no occupancy permit, no permit for that to be a veterinary clinic or a quarantine facility or anything. So that's required by the law, so that's-
Does the other, does the other quarantine facility have an occupancy permit?
Uh it does, it but it was, it goes all the way back to nineteen eighty-three, so um then the-
But is that other quarantine facility regularly inspected as provided by law?
It is, yes, I I inspect that one.
Could you furnish all those um documents to the committee?
Yeah, I will, um I don't have all, I just got your notification last night.
I understand, but if you're saying that it is, uh we'd like to see evidence of that.
Sure, um the, or was that, yeah, okay, so that that's one of them.
So you're saying DPW didn't give an occupancy permit for Waisao to operate?
Correct, that's correct. And that's required by the law, you know, and so, you know, basically what we're talking about is is taking a family home, taking some bedrooms and and calling it a quarantine facility. The law simply doesn't get close to allowing that now. So we can change the law, uh you know, and fix that so that somebody can, you know, turn bedrooms into a quarantine facility if you like. Uh but right now, if you'll read the law, it leaves a-
Have you been to uh Waisao?
I haven't been inside.
So under what authority do you do you give this testimony that 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 quarantine facility still looks like a family home?
Well-
Is it your opinion that that they haven't done any renovations to conform to the law and then you just think that it's still a family home?
Yes, I think they haven't, they haven't built an eight-foot fence with barbed wire that's required by the law. The law, I I mean, i- if you would allow me to read it to you, it's it's very clear. And again, Senator, we don't have uh any concern other than enforcing the laws that this body has written and if if-
Well, that's why, Dr. Poole, I'm just uh perplexed that that eight years later, we're still in the same situation.
How can we fix it for him though, Senator? I mean, I can't go and get the occupancy permit for him, I can't go build the fence for him. I- if you could read, it says, "The premises of a CQF shall be surrounded by a perimeter fence not less than eight feet in height and topped with barbed wire tilted inward. Fencing shall be a mesh size and so on so," but and there's nothing like that. And and it doesn't say unless Dr. Poole thinks it's not important, you know, I mean, there's no codicil like that.
But I'm I think the the benefit of this status hearing is maybe we can, we can find a way to update those laws so that that we increase the standards. If if you're talking about an eight-foot barbed wire fence and the facility has money to have a concrete wall, what would you prefer? Would you prefer a bob- barbed wire fence or would you prefer a concrete wall?
Oh, I would very much so, oh, I absolutely would prefer, but that's just-
Over 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 a concrete wall?
Absolutely, yes sir, because you can't see through a concrete wall and you can see through a fence. You can tell if there's an animal standing there waiting to bolt out, if he's escaped from his primary, excuse me, primary enclosure and and is ready to bolt out. And you know, I I helped to build the military working dog quarantine facilities all over the world where we had nearly unlimited, you know, funds and we always used cyclone fencing with barbed wire. I think it's, I think it's the best, but that's just my opinion, you know, the legislature can change and whatever you do, that's what we'll enforce. There's also one other part on this and it says, "In the case of a commercial quarantine facility with multiple commercial or private uses such as a veterinary clinic, the quarantine area shall be physically separated by a perimeter fence and other areas not intended for quarantine. In addition, the quarantine area shall have an area or areas for entrance and exit separate from all other areas and shall have separate employees assigned exclusively and so on." So again, this thing makes it really, really tough, the law as written, for Dr. Joseph to turn that into a quarantine facility. I think that it would be difficult or impossible for him to continue to use it as his home and veterinary clinic and quarantine facility with the existing law. So I really think you'd have to throw this entire thing out and start over and and you can certainly do that.
Could you also provide the committee with copies of all sanitary and con- uh quarantine reports for the last two years?
Sure, well, the quarantine-
You mentioned that the other quarantine facility is compliant, it's up to the code?
Sure, the-
And it's up to the standard, so can you also provide reports of that?
I can. Uh there was one one thing in there though, the maybe I didn't understand, and it said the um quarantine documents there, the, see, every animal, um I don't I don't have your, here it is right here, it said um, um-
Provide- Yeah, do you provide record-keeping for the pre-quarantine and post-quarantine-
Provide all pre-quarantine and post-quarantine health examination documentation, that's every single animal, there's thousands of those.
But shouldn't you have a record of those thousands?
We have them, but I mean, it's these, and and I brought four in here just for accident brought, and and so each one is is like this, so, and there is the small matter of of the HIPAA regulations, that is, the the Health Information Privacy Act that, you know, I'm not supposed to just be spewing these things out. Everybody says, well, the veterinary records, nobody cares, but it it is a federal law and so we might have to be a little careful about distributing those, but I mean, it's a tremendous amount of duplication if you want all of these and and I'm happy to do it, I just don't really understand it. Um if, anyway, we're we're happy to do it, Senator, but it's just, I mean, it's boxes and boxes and boxes of these things, so, because every animal, every single animal generates a file like this.
Okay, uh Director Titegwe, do you have anything to add? Okay, do you have anything else, Dr. Poole? Not, I'm gonna just ask you two to remain there and I'm gonna invite um Dr. Joseph and, is this Tom Cruise? Tor- Ton Cruise? Ton, Ton Cruise? And is uh Mr. Cruise here?
Mr. Cruise is out taking care of his baby.
Good, now, that's where that's where he should be. Okay, so you 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 three obviously uh know each other. Um Dr. Joseph, I'll I'll give you an opportunity at this time.
Okay, first of all, is this catching my voice? First of all, um he did read the law. Then it said, "A perimeter fence not less than." A concrete wall is considerably more than, okay? The other thing it says is you have to have an inspection. How can he say this stuff without an inspection? He really has no idea what's going on inside. He uh spent a lot of time about the fence and these two have written documents about how important the fence is. The law says, "No part of the fence shall be larger than two by two." Every single part of the Harper fence is larger than two by two. And you're gonna hear a report from Mr. McSweeney back here on how his dog was badly damaged because of the facility and the two-by-two fencing may have saved the dog's injury and all the trauma and pain the dog went through. Um if my fence is not good enough and the law says it is two by two and we take Dr. Poole at his word that he's all only concerned is obeying the law, then why the heck is Harper Quarantine open? He mentions that my place has to be a separate facility. Uh it is a separate facility and I believe we've shown that uh to the Senator and a lot of other people. It does have a separate entrance, we do have separate employees and I will uh beg to say that they don't, okay? Um it says has to have a perimeter fence from the other areas. If you take a look at the Harper facility, they have an outside fence, they do have a perimeter fence and the dogs are housed and everything. And then as you go on to what I would call the inside area of the quarantine, the space between where the quarantine is and the house, there is no perimeter fence. So these dogs have the ability to run around a very large area, which includes the boarding facility which is down the way. So again, this is a double standard in my book and they're just giving you information that, okay, it's one-sided, all right? Um HIPAA law, boy, this is beginning a joke. I have uh over two hundred requests for medical records from the other veterinarians, including those serviced by Dr. Poole at other clinics. Not one of them has been honored and they say the HIPAA laws do not apply to the animals. So we have Ray Tenorio, his wife, the lawyers behind Isla Clinic and everybody, going to court and trying to prove that the uh animal records do not qualify on this. And we have uh Dr. Poole sitting here telling you that he can't release it because of that, okay? He's telling you it's boxes and box and box of all this stuff. Let him bring them out, let us go through them and let us show you that the things that they are supposed to be doing, they are not. Fear of duplicating this or bringing you the information uh or getting you to believe it's too difficult, these are the things that I believe he has been hired to do, the two of them. And we would like to see their records, we would like to see what they've actually done, we would like to see the proof and the documentation, okay? And the documentation is a very, very big issue here. I will give you the example of uh Mr. Noor, who yesterday wanted to ship his animal off island. Mr. Noor's animal uh went to get stamped over at Department of Agriculture, cause he's going to Japan. They refused to stamp it because the rabies certificate did not have lot number and expiration date on it and they wanted to send it back to me. I said, "Well, please put in writing what it is that you think is wrong and what the law is." Dr. Poole refused to document it and stamped it all okay. Now, there are two things here on this uh report with Mr. Noor. One is that Dr. Poole is correct, the rabies certificate was not proper. It did not have the lot number and the expiration date as required by law. But the problem of getting that is that of Guam has taken all my records and they have not returned them, even though the uh judge has already told them that they have to, okay? Um so I can't come up with that information. It is true that uh the rabies certificate was not needed to transfer to Japan. Japan does not require rabies vaccination from Guam. Japan has very distinct forms, you cannot miss them, they got Japan on them and we're all used to the Japan forms, we all know what they look like. So Mr. Noor brought in Form A and Form B and had them stamped, approved, uh and then Dr. Poole said, "Well, you don't need to have the rabies, so I can stamp these other ones, but I'm not gonna stamp the rabies." Fine, that is very proper. He stamped the forms, they were proper, they were done right, okay? Then he also told Mr. Noor that, oh, he held it up because he didn't realize he was going to Japan. I find this to be very disingenuous because the forms are that obvious that they are from Japan. So what really going on here is you came from Waisao, we're going to hassle you. And when Waisao asks for documentation, all of a sudden, everything's either okay or they simply don't answer. And you're gonna see through the rest of our testimony that we have FOIA request after FOIA request, inspection request after inspection request. We have simply even requested the document that they want to use as the form for the inspection of a quarantine. And over the last, what, three, four years, they have been unable to provide even the form so that we know what we are going to be inspected for. Okay, I would like to go on to the uh issue of the uh occupancy permit. The occupancy permit relating to DPW is in regards to an outside building that is not attached to my building. It has nothing to do with my building, okay? And even the AG's office has not decided to proceed with this because it just isn't available, the thing that's going on. You have this uh packet of information here and a business and license application. Everybody has signed off on it except Department of Agriculture. And here it says, "Referring to Department of Agriculture," okay? If Department of Agriculture had come by, we would've had our permit. Everybody else has signed off on it. And let's see, this is dated six, six, twelve, seven, eight, seven, twenty-eight, twelve and six, eight, twelve. So it was referred to Dr. Poole two years ago to do his inspection for the sanitary and the occupancy permit.
Director Titegwe, are you aware of that document?
This has been given to her and we have a signed receipt that she's received this.
May I, may I speak?
Okay.
An inspection was actually conducted in October of two thousand and five by a Department of Public Health and it was done by um Mary Lou Babaton and she went in and inspected his proposed- And it was done by, um, Mary Lou Babaton, and she went in and inspected his proposed quarantine facility, found it unsatisfactory, wrote pages of defects and things that were wrong with it. And we've never gotten any response, she didn't get any response to that, okay, we've corrected those defects and that sort of thing. So, the, the, we're simply, and, and the law-
Yeah, but in, but in two thousand and twelve, they signed off, and they said, "Refer to Department of Agriculture."
Not because that was approved, but simply because the jurisdiction had changed from public health to agriculture. That, that's just a jurisdictional issue.
So they didn't have jurisdiction in two thousand and twelve, they shouldn't have jurisdiction in two thousand and five?
Well, they did then, that, that's when it changed over. Public health used to have jurisdiction for this. And, and at, at some point in there, it changed, I don't know exactly when it did, but it changed over.
Are you talking about jurisdiction over the, um-
Over the quarantine facility.
And over gain also, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
And so that, that all changed over, so. The fact is, and, and it said, it states there in the law, that these things have to be completed before we do the inspection. I can read that to you also in the law, if you like. That we have to have the occupancy permit, we have to have the operational plan, which is another thing that he refused to provide. But it, it doesn't, it doesn't mean like you, you have most of it and it's okay, or, the law says you have to have all of it, we can change the law-
Well, if you're saying the law says to have all of it, I'm finding it hard, I'm having, finding it hard to believe that the other quarantine facility has all of it. Because Director Dominguez, um, on August twenty-four, two thousand and twelve, says that DPW can find no building or occupancy permit for any other veterinarian clinic on Guam. And so if you're applying one standard to one veterinarian, um, clinic and, and not to the others, unless, that's why I said, "Do you have documents that show that the other veterinarian clinics have occupancy permits?"
We're not talking about veterinarian clinics right now.
Well, we're talking about everything. We're talking about equal protection under the law, and whatever standards you're applying to one veterinarian, it should apply to all.
Every, uh, every veterinarian I think on this island has approached me about building a quarantine facility. I think every single one, almost, a, a single exception-
Well, I'm just saying, if you're telling me that, um, Dr. Harper's quarantine facility has an occupancy permit, I'd like to see it.
I was told that, now I haven't seen that myself.
Well, well, then, why didn't you verify?
I wasn't asked to verify that, I, I was told-
Now, now I'm asking you to verify.
I'm happy to, I mean, I'll try to, but it should be able to do, it's a trip to DPW, and I'm happy to do that.
And what if they don't have an occupancy permit, what-
They're going to have to apply and get one, which is what DPW asked him to do. Please apply for, and he refused to do that.
I did not refuse to apply, and this is proof of that. Okay? Um, he's talking about what happened back in two thousand and five, when DPW or Public Health transferred this to Agriculture. Prior to this, they said that we didn't get our plans submitted to DPHSS. And that's now been disproven. We did write our corrections to this, and we have submitted all our corrections to this, and document after document, plans and forms, blueprints and et cetera to DPW, and all this stuff is all there. And as proof of that, again, they referred all this back to Agriculture. Um, he referred to an occupancy permit that, uh, he said quarantine, uh, Harper Quarantine had back in eighty-seven. Well, in two thousand and one, the law was changed, and Harper Quarantine was given two years to update her facility. Okay? Then her facility was hit by Pong Tsang Wah. Okay? And since then, it has, they have never submitted any plans on how to renovate it, repair it, or anything. They have not met the qual, the two-year latency that they were given to update to modern standards. Their plumbing doesn't match. These people have freely admitted that the cages are not the proper size, they say that they're close and it doesn't matter. He just sat here and said he's going to do the law by the letter. This is just not being consistent. I mean-
Di- Director, do you have, um, a checklist? Dr. Poole, do you have a checklist of, um, quarantine facility? Yeah? I mean, do you have everything that's, um, necessary under the law? Uh, do you, do you have a checklist where you can do a ranking?
I haven't made a checklist, but it's laid out in the law very clearly. I mean, it's just one after the other, it's, it's almost a checklist in, in and of itself. I'm not sure why a checklist would be required, because it's very, I don't think, Dr. Joseph fails to understand what's required, I don't think, if I only had a checklist, I could understand what's required, I don't think that's what we're talking about here. You know, it's just simply a matter of, and, and as far as whether, it, it's like, i- if I could, Senator, it would be very much like saying, if, if there are any defects at all at Guam Memorial Hospital, then we're gonna close it, we're gonna close it. But if there are any defects and we don't close it, then we're gonna allow anybody to, to put up a pup tent and call that a hospital. I mean, the fact that a place isn't perfect, doesn't mean that anything else can come on with anything. So, yes, my judgment is that the Harper facility is substantially compliant, and the things that are wrong are fairly minor, that are being addressed along the way, but I may be wrong, someone can disagree with me on that, and, and that's fine. But in my opinion, things like having a perimeter barbed wire fence is enormous. I think that's extremely important. Having a facility that's entirely separate from a veterinary clinic, or a home, or anything like that, I think is extremely important. I may be wrong.
But you just, you just said that you didn't have the latitude to, to see how Dr. Poole feels about these things, if the law requires a perimeter, perimeter fence, and that's what you have to provide.
The law says it has to have a perimeter fence.
I understand, I understand, but I'm saying if the, uh, law also requires other certain requirements of an animal quarantine facility, y- you know, you, you just can't say they-
Then what you're saying, Senator, if I understand, is you're saying everything has to have one hundred percent, or it can't operate. And Guam Memorial Hospital has to be one hundred percent, every nursing home has to be one hundred percent, or they have to close their doors. If they have one defect, they gotta close the doors.
Well, if you had a checklist that does some kind of ranking, you can be able to, to determine whether or not, um, whether or not that facility meets the requirements of law, so that you don't have to be, you don't have to be-
A checklist won't take long, if, if you want a checklist, we can make a checklist, Senator, that's just not that hard.
Hey, may? We produced this checklist back in two thousand and six for the Department of Agriculture, goes down law, item by item, law by law, section by section, point by point. Goes through everything that's required according to the law. Okay? We offered this to them, and they haven't done it. Now, you're saying, "Why do you need a checklist?" Well, the law says so. The law says a checklist, a form, inspection form and such, are required by law and must be approved by the director. This is the law. Okay? The reasoning for this is very standard. I go to DPW, they tell me exactly what I have to do, everybody knows what it has to do, it is not up to Dr. Poole's opinion or Dr. Poole's evaluation, this is what has been done. In addition, the law says you should set up a demerit system, so that everybody knows how it goes. Now, on this form, we set up a demerit system, and we don't expect it to be, uh, held up in its entirety or anything else, but it was a start. This was two thousand and six. This is eight years later. Have they even looked at this? My answer is no. Because I'll be real blunt, this is a personal issue between Dr. Poole and me. Okay? Uh, he beat me out for the territorial job, and I now have a better job. Okay? Fine, everybody moves on. Um, we have had a lot of run-ins with Dr. Poole. Okay? Dr. Poole just, we had a deposition, where he even admitted, under oath, that he dispenses and uses, or administers controlled drugs, and he has no controlled substance registration.
That's a simple lie.
He doesn't, uh, I have the tape, I can run it, the tape, I have it with me.
Run the tape.
Want me to run the tape?
I mean, Senator, that's hardly what we're talking about here.
Well. I can run this tape, sir.
I have never dispensed any controlled drugs.
Have you administered them?
I have administered them in the presence of another veterinarian.
That's not what the law says. The law says you have to have a controlled substance license.
But what in the world does that have to do with what we're talking about tonight?
Your honesty and following the law.
I, I, I do follow the law, and-
Let me, let me ask Mr. Cruz for his testimony, uh, at this time, yeah. Thank you, Dr. Joseph. Ton? Can you please, uh, speaking to the mic and, um-
Hi, I'm Ton Cruise, I've worked at, uh, Anderson Quarantine Facility for four years, I've also used Harper Valley Kennel, uh, as far as a quarantine facility, and pretty much like, why ha, isn't Waisao been inspected yet for the first part, you know, and it's like, it's more, how would you say it? Yup.
Take a deep breath, it's okay.
One second.
And I'll get ready to say beep. Okay, just give me a signal.
So, yeah, I mean, from working up at Anderson and working at Waisao for two years, um, four years and two years is quite a, a span, or a, a period, you know, and from just knowing about quarantine for four years, and then knowing what I know now as far as, uh, vet, uh, technician, um, there's still things that quarantines can improve on, such as like flea and tick prevention. You know that humans can get tick disease? You know, so, there's, yeah. Yeah, I know.
Of course, yeah. Just speaking to the mic, because I-
Can you reference the inspections that you saw done by Dr. Poole?
So I've seen him come up twice. The first time, he stayed at the front desk, the second time, he walked around the, the facility, just the quarantine only. And as far as walk-through, was just inside the building and say, "Oh, that's a nice animal," um, and just walk right back out. As far as looking at the facility itself, you know, it's, it's a poor facility to be run by a federal, uh, government. But as far as that, it's, you know, inspection wasn't really inspecting anything but just seeing an animal.
Can you describe the conditions that you saw, the field, algae, et cetera?
So the paint up in quarantine is coming off the walls, there's almost no more paint, algae's growing all over the facility, um, yeah, dogs catch, uh, ringworm from moisture. Um, so, yeah, a lot of dogs too, had to get, uh, veterinary assistance.
Dr. Poole, how often do you inspect the, uh, animal quarantine facility?
Monthly.
Monthly? And, uh, when was the last time you were there?
Uh, I think, uh, May, I think it was May eighth was the last one.
How much time do you spend when you make these monthly inspections?
Probably thirty minutes, something like that.
Do you have a checklist when you make your inspections?
No.
No? Do you have a RIN report, uh?
I, I do, I give a written report.
Cause I understand when, when public health makes their inspections of all these places, they do a checklist and they run by a demerit system and point system, right, and, so in any of your, um, inspections of the animal quarantine facility, have you found, uh, any, any concerns that, any concerns that warrant, uh, warrant them to make cur, take current evaluation?
Oh, sure, sure, I point things out, you know, every inspection, there, there's always things that need to be, you know, worked on, repaired, you know, attended to. And, and they've been responsive, and so, um, and that's really what we're trying to get, is that, you know, you want a responsive attitude, and, and we've really had that with the Anderson facility both, you know. Sometimes you bump into money problems, you know, Anderson, when we find a defect, they can't just instantly fix it, they've got to put in a request, it goes through the military channels, it takes time. And, but, but, you know, they're, they're good to do that. And, and I've had good experience with Harper too, and that, you know, pointing that, for example, they had to replace some, uh, some gauging, uh, some, some wire. And it calls for number nine gauge, the law required, calls for number nine gauge. And so when he got it, it was ten gauge, and he thought that was better. And I said, you know, gauge works the other way, the smaller the number, the larger it is, and so nine gauge is heavier than ten gauge. And he had bought quite a lot of it, and I said, you know, "I'm sorry, that's just not gonna get it, you're gonna have to, I hope you can get your money back," but, and he understood, he said, "That's okay, we'll order the right thing." So, there's things like that all the time, where we find problems. And understand that a quarantine facility, they're getting pressure washed all the time, they're getting sprayed all the time, and so your epoxy paint is coming up, the stuff you're putting on there's coming up all the time, it's just a constant battle. And so, of course, there's gonna be defects every time you go. The point is not, are there, are, you know, is it perfect? But are they attending to the defects, and that's what, that's what we try to get to.
But are they also grand, being grandfathered in, because as you said, they're the only animal quarantine facility, you know, on the civilian side, that no matter what the, um, the demerits are, or what, what the problems may be, like you said, you don't wanna shut them down?
Oh, I would love to have another one, and I think-
No, but are you, are you suggesting that no matter what their shortfalls are, uh, they're gonna be remained open in operation no matter what?
No, I'm not suggesting that at all, but we've, we've never had, you know, I've never had a, the sort of thing like, you may not be able to safely contain this animal, this animal might be able to escape, you know, this, you know, I mean, for example, in, in a quarantine facility, there's few things that are worse than that potential, that this animal could actually get out and get away. And so, we've never had anything close to that, and so, they, we work on cleanliness issues, those are very important. But, but also understand that i- it's a little ironic to me that, that there's so much fuss about this, because we're really talking about so little money, really, so little business, because Anderson gets almost all of it, and these animals mostly are there one night and then home. I mean, that they go home, almost all of them. Usually when I inspect the facility, there's no animals there, maybe one. Because they normally come in at three o'clock in the morning, they're out first thing the next morning. And so, this is not someplace, in the old days, and, and when this law was written, these animals were there for a hundred and twenty days. And, and so things have changed, and so maybe it's a good idea to update this. But I would hate to see things like, you know, a barbed wire fence go away, that's just my opinion, but I think those things are-
When these animals come in, on these, on these different, um, programs, as you pointed out, are you the only vet that clears them, or do?
No. No, these animals come in and are met by the quarantine people, either the Anderson people, so they go there, and customs also, and they go there and, and they meet the animal, and the animal is put into the carrier and taken to the quarantine facility. And then before it can be released to go home, the animal has to be examined by the veterinarian, scanned with a microchip, to make sure that the microchip matches all of the documents. The microchip is really the gold standard, that's what really proves, this is the animal that the veterinarian drew the blood from.
But who selects the veterinarian?
The, actually, the quarantine facility selects the veterinarian. And that's in the statute. And so, on Anderson, it's the military veterinarians that they use there, and right now, Harper Facility is using Dr. Roschino.
So there was only one quarantine facility, there would likely be only one veterinarian that gets all the, uh, gets to, uh, clear all the animals coming in?
That would be up to the quarantine facility.
Yeah.
But there, there are, as I said, there are other veterinarians that are interested in doing this, and I, and I've been talking to them, and giving them the law, and say, "Just, just follow the law, it's pretty much stepwise, it's laid out very clearly." And, and I think, and I hope, this soon will-
If, if the law were changed to say that it shall be on a rotational basis, uh, is that something you, you'll support?
I don't understand about rotational basis.
That, that, that the territorial vet shall establish by rotation, uh, the veterinarians to, to pre-clear these, uh, clear these animals, so that, you know, there's checks and balances all around.
I mean, I, I don't have any feeling about that, I, I don't, I, I don't know that it would be an advantage, and I don't have anything against it.
Okay, Mr. Cruz, did you have something else to add? Senator, I'm going to have to go, if it's, if it's our-
I would like to play this before he leaves.
Yeah, that's, yeah, if it's okay, Dr. Joseph, we just forego that, I think he already, uh, kind of admitted that.
Oh, I'm, was referring to his, uh,
Yeah.
controlled drugs, but-
Yeah, I think he kind of admitted that by saying, "What does it matter here in this hearing?" So I think you've made your point.
Okay, um, she, uh, I would also like to, uh, mention a few other things. Uh, they said that I did not offer a plan. Uh, the whole plan and how it operates and everything. Uh, well, actually, that is a bold-faced lie. Okay? In fact, Telotidically worked with me on the plan, submitted it to her. And then they decided that they didn't like it because it was on an electronic format. Okay? And, you know, electronic format's very acceptable. Okay, we did not want our stuff copied, because we knew that Harper was going to copy it. Okay, and at that time, Harper didn't have one.
Uh, Director Tadic, have you ever gone up to the Waisao facility? You were never invited? Oh.
I, 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 I will give you ten invitations that, uh-
Okay. We'll let her finish. We'll let her finish.
Okay, do that.
Do that and she'll go.
Do that and I shall, I will come. I will come, sure.
Well, my, my, my question was, you know, the department has taken a very strong position against the inspection of this, uh, proposed animal quarantine facility and, uh, you haven't even been there.
Correct, Senator, but like I say, I would, you know, from now, like, what, what, what was pointed out that I was, you know, I've never been there. So I'm gonna make an effort to go there and see for my, you know, for my own.
Okay, okay.
Can we ask that she do it with a checklist?
Yeah, Dr. Poole said that he, it was relatively simple to prepare a checklist. Can you make sure he does a checklist?
Yes, I'm writing that down to, to make sure.
Thank you, Director.
And then the operational plan that you were talking about, that Tello has given you, I have not seen that.
Tello said she was sitting there with her.
And also-
At her own desk in, um, Director Tidigui's office.
Also, uh, oc-, um, the occupational-
Operational plan.
Yeah, yeah. And also the permit. Uh, let me just invite Dr. Oshiro to, yeah. And if you two can still stay.
Yeah.
Dr. Oshiro, thank you, Director. Dr. Oshiro, you're recognized at this time.
Yes, thank you. Um, my name is Dr. Vanessa Oshiro and I would like to just introduce myself. I'm, um, from Guam originally. Born in Gigo, graduated from Publics High School in nineteen eighty-eight and practiced off island, um, since I left, uh, at that time. And have, did not come back to work on Guam until two thousand and ten. So I did not really have any sort of, you know, background at all working in the local community. I have practiced in Washington State and Hawaii, both on Oahu and the big island of Hawaii. I came back to Guam and pretty much, uh, started working in the practice of Dr. Joseph Edlin, who has since left island and is practicing on, in Hawaii himself. Now, when I came back to Guam, I just came back to give back to this community because my, excuse me. Thank you, sorry for that. To come back and work in this community after my father passed away in, uh, two thousand and five. At that time I realized there was an animal community here to serve because at that time, uh, Gain was having one of its annual, uh, spa clinics at that time. And I'd never imagined that that could be here. I'd never imagined that could be here at all because when I was growing up here, that wasn't the way it was. There, there was not a sense that there was a commitment to animals in the community, uh, and when I was growing up. So very much a surprise and very much an inspiration to come back to work for. Two thousand and seven, my sister passed away. She worked with autistic kids in the Karainu Project. Uh, that is in part named after her. And she had always wanted me to come back and work in this community as well. But I could never see it happening because it didn't seem like there was opportunity. But when my sister died, she asked that I come back and try and do that. And I came back with, without any real knowledge of how it would be to work here with, with just that commitment to her memory and what she had done in her line of work and what she saw as promise in this community. That is why I gave up my livelihood that is very productive, my, my, everything that I knew and was familiar with stateside to come back here, to serve here where there's so much hope, there's so much potential, there's so much of everything that everyone can have a share of that, but it has to come the right way. So when I first came to the clinic that I was at work at, there were quite a lot of, uh, uh, things being thrown around about what people were here to do and being jealous of other people's business. Now, I don't know anything about that when I first, when I first came back here. So I really didn't participate in the discussion at all, okay? I would just listen. I would, I came to work. I cannot afford not to work. My work is for me, my patient and the client because what you give to that patient becomes what it becomes for the client as well. It goes so far. It goes so far. So in doing this work over time, you, you basically you'll, you'll start to see what's out there and you'll start to make your own impression. Now, everybody's gonna have their own idea of what they see, understand. Now, you'll have, everyone here will have to be the judge of what they think they see, all right? Everyone will have to bear that for themselves and bear that with their conscience and understand clearly what's at stake here. All right? Everyone has a right to make a living. And I would, I would argue that I have a right to make a living in my own home where I'm from. But even I don't think that I own this land. I am not, I own nothing but my name and my reputation. Everything after that is dust. We are dust after that. So please understand that when I come here to testify, I, I'm not even expecting that I will. But I feel that I must say something right now and clearly that this is not right to actually put people in a position where they have to defend the job that they do that comes so difficult. It is not easy to practice on Guam. Especially in the climate that's created by people like Mr. Joseph. Now, I'm gonna tell you right now that there will be lots to be said about me and what I've done in this community since I've been back. But I'll tell you first that the first person to come visit me was Mr. Joseph when I first came here. The very first year. And he had lots to say then and I just didn't participate in that. But he gave me, he came back again and a third time. And then, and the, the, the third time was through a letter basically saying, if I'm not with you, you're against me. And then, and you must be like everyone else. No, sir, you don't know who I am. You have no business saying anything about who I am and where I've come from and how I came to be here. I am ready to speak on that because that is wrong. It is wrong. And whatever you see is smoke and mirrors here. Please understand that this comes from a very real place. I did not come back from where I was to be uncomfortable for the wrong reasons. Please understand that.
Well, I, I do understand that I thank you for your participation. I wanna make it clear that this status hearing is to make sure that there's a equal protection of Guam.
I understand, I understand, sir. I understand. And that's why I'm testifying. So you can understand where I'm coming from when I actually say to you how I became involved in this. And I will tell you right now, Dr. Harper is no longer practicing on Guam. She is in the States right now, just as Dr. Edlin is practicing in the States. Many people came out and said, these people are just here for the money. No, do you know that Dr. Edlin, out of his own pocket, kept that clinic open? For four years. Out of his pocket because yes, business was hurting, but not because, you know, he didn't stay open if he didn't care about this community. And actually because he did, I can come home and actually practice in this place that I'm from. You understand? And that is very important to understand because people will say what they will say and you will believe it if you think that there's a reason to believe it. But I'm gonna just, to say right now, there's a reason that we are all here and trying. And that's because we love this place and we love what, what can come out of it. Now, anyone can say anything about anything. Now, you, you, you have to be able to tell where it's coming from.
I think you, I think you also make a strong argument for Dr. Joseph's frustrations. And how, and how everything he's had to go through, uh, I don't know how much, I don't know how much he spent having to go to court and won every single court case, uh-
Well, you know what, sir? That there, not all of those court cases are resolved. And there is a, in, in the States and we, you know, I'm gonna go ahead and make the argument. In order for me to have a Guam license, I had to have a stateside license. So I think there's an argument for why we have to at least consider the, the reason why it's important to consider what is considered standard of practice stateside. Because in order to get a Guam license, you have to have a stateside license. Over there, you would not be able to do a lot of things that Dr. Joseph does.
Are you alleging that another vet does not meet that standard and does not have a stateside license?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying what, what I'm about to say is important to consider that because what I'm saying is there, there are basically a set of parameters that you would have as a professional to be able to be licensed by a board. Uh, by, uh, by a board. There's typically a board that's required to look at your licensing. And that is what is involved right now is the board is given that task. Now, Mr. Joseph or Dr. Joseph, I'm sorry, actually, uh, has issue with that and he's going through his, his process the way he is allowed to do. Okay? That's by rights, that's his, his right to do. But that doesn't mean that, that any of what the, the normal process that's happening is, is inappropriate. Do you see what I'm saying? I, I'm saying that to say that we are frustrated with the law, the, the law is, is, is trying to happen. People are trying to do their jobs. But every opportunity that there is, we will be, anyone here will be accused of, of not doing what they ought to do. And we are just trying to do our jobs. I feel that that is important for you to understand because what I'm gonna tell you is that I am the, one of the doctor, I am the doctor that was asked to take over Dr. Harper's, uh, uh, examinations when she left island because they, they needed a doctor to do that and she trusted the work. And that was strictly professional relationship. I don't know Dr. Harper before I ever came back to Guam. But I will be accused for wanting it just for my business. Well, if that's the case, then why will I, right now, I have not been paid for most of any of the exams that I've done. I haven't insisted on paying. It's not that they didn't pay me. They haven't insisted on, I haven't insisted on being paid. Because that's not the point. The point is to do the work and when we get paid, we get paid. We try to be here. We try to work and do it fairly and right. Now, I, I stand by that. And I will tell you that it, I haven't been paid right now and the money that I was supposed to be paid, if, when I get, get it paid, I will, I will donate it to a charitable organization if that's what I'm about.
I think we all agree that what we're doing here is a quality of life issue for our pets. And like I said earlier, I moved early on to amend the quarantine law to pro- provide for, for less than five days requirement if they do the FAVIN testing in the mainland, you know, and if they, if they have a vet certified that, uh, that they don't have rabies and that they don't have to meet the hundred twenty day requirement. Uh, when I, when we did that in the legislature, maybe eight years ago, I believe, there was a lot of pushback, uh, from this one animal quarantine facility saying that, uh, that law was not necessary, that they have to go through the hundred twenty day quarantine. And so my point is, you know, laws need to be updated because of technologies. And so why, why put an animal through a hundred twenty days of quarantine when there's a way to do that prior to coming to Guam? And also for us, it was a, a quality of life issue for military families. Uh, that's exactly why the military built their own animal quarantine facility here on the island. Because they felt that they, they were not giving their military families the standard that, that their pets ought to receive. So they spent three and a half million dollars to do that. Uh, and so I, I just want to know from having these status hearings, what can we do to make, to better the lives of, of not only the pets, but their owners? And I've, I've received so many complaints and documented complaints from families who tried to bring their animals out and, and the, 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 there's no standard. There's no standard. There's no checklist. There's no, sometimes, uh, something is required, another time, nothing is required. And that's what I want to get down to is not putting anybody on the spot. And I never said, I never said anyone is not doing their job.
Well, I, sir, that, that may not be your intention, but that is what it feels like to me. And I'm not, I'm not the one on the stand.
And if, and if it results in making a process where everybody's treated equally, then I believe I've done my job tonight.
Well, everybody should be treated equally. Everybody should be treated equally regardless of what is, is said in a public forum that is not proved. Do you understand what I'm saying? I believe that it's important for all of us to live up to that. I, I don't, I, if it's done fairly and correctly and what is appropriate, uh, across the board, across the board, across the board, okay? And that, and that goes for the law, but following the law by Dr. Joseph as well.
And there are other senators that tried to intervene to get to the bottom of this. Uh, early on in the term, Senator Sniklas offered to help. And so I said, I've been at it for six years. Please, whatever you can do to help. His calls were not returned. His letters were unanswered. And in the end, it, it's, it's on my back because I have oversight over agriculture. So that's why we're here tonight. We just didn't come to this place by accident. This is eight years of history.
I, I understand, Senator. I understand. And it is entirely appropriate in your position to ask these questions. But it's also important to hear from everyone involved. And this is one forum. And unfortunately, we know it's not the only forum out there on Guam. So I'm making it very clear. And it's, believe me, it's not easy to sit here and, and have to speak like this. But it's important because it's very significant that this, this arena can be improperly used. And I don't want there to be only one side here presented.
Well, I appreciate your courage. Um, Director, Dr. Joseph?
Um, thank you, Dr. Oshiro. Um, those are wonderful accomplishments you've done. Wonderful. Uh, you know, we can go through all my accomplishments. We can go through all Maritina Tidigui's accomplishments too and all the good that she's done to this community. Uh, what we're addressing here today though is quarantine, okay? Um, I don't even wanna start about mine and her difficulties and what Edlin said and what she's pushed and et cetera. So my whole thing in regards to her, uh, what she said is, I would actually like to ask Mr. McSweeney. Come up and tell you about his experience with Dr. Oshiro.
Were, were we ready for that?
Before, before, before he speaks, I would please like to finish because I did not finish my statement. I, Mr. McSweeney is part of a, uh, a, a case that went to the, the courts now. Mr. McSweeney will speak to what he will tell you is Harper Valley Kennels issue. Now, that has not been proved in court. That has not been, that is, that is actually what I'm talking about when I say that there are many ways that what can be put in front of you will look like whatever it is that, whatever someone wants you to believe will put it out there like. And that's, Dr. Joseph has a lot of ability to do that. He's, he's very much been part of the community. And for whatever good that he's done, I, that's wonderful. But-
It, it's unfortunate that the territorial vet has had to leave. Um, but I think the director should hear whatever the people have to say.
Absolutely, absolutely. Absolutely. And then I would like the ability to rebut.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Can we hear from Mr. McSweeney?
Yeah, he signed up to testify. He did, yeah. And, uh, let me begin also or continue by saying I appreciate the decorum here. Cause I know this is a very sensitive issue and it's pretty, um, it has the potential to be explosive. And so I appreciate, uh, that we're having a conversation and not trying to talk over each other. Having said that, please continue the, uh, decorum that we've established.
Good evening. Uh, my name is John McSweeney. Uh, and really we're pet lovers, my wife and I. Um, the reason that I'm here tonight is not necessarily to support Dr. Joseph. I'm here asking the, uh, government of Guam to please consider uh, approving a additional quarantine facility simply because of the experiences I've had as a civilian member of the Guam community. So Anderson is not available to us. We have one choice, which is Harper's. We've had two dogs pass through, uh, Harper's. Spending the hundred and twenty days compulsory period, both of which have been returned to us traumatized. The last dog was returned to us with a broken leg. Subsequently, uh, it was diagnosed as having a broken leg with, uh, severe muscle wasting equivalent to several weeks. Now, the dog may have, uh, self-inflicted the injury. It may have been caused by neglect. We have no idea. And as Dr. Oshiro has already mentioned, uh, the court, the judgment is pending. So I don't wish necessarily to argue the rights or wrongs. I just wish that we in future have a choice because of the ugly experiences we had with Harper Valley. The dog was returned to us without any notice that it was injured. And as soon as we got it home, it was evidently, uh, limping. So all I would ask is that you give serious consideration to either amending the hundred and twenty days or providing us with a choice, whether it's Dr. Joseph or whether it's the other vets. The territorial vet has alluded to us requesting quarantine, um, quarantine facilities. I just okay, request you give serious consideration.
Dr. Oshiro?
Yes, um, basically what I'm going to say is that that animal and, and that case before judge was not established to have had an injury that was, uh, found to have occurred at, at the Harper Valley Kennels. Now, Dr. Joseph was involved with that and, uh, and, and he was at the actual hearing. Now, why he- Now, why he should be there when he actually was not at any point part of my exam or the referral to Dr. Malakuti, two separate businesses, but somehow Dr. Joseph is involved. So I'm just telling you that there is reasons to, to be careful in what you consider in all of this. Because when we want something, if you want something, you can basically put it out there such that many people will look at that and think that there is something there to be seen, but not always is that the case.
But I guess what Mr. McSweeney is saying is that as a consumer, he'd just like there to be choice.
And I think that that's fine, I, I, I think choice is fine.
And then we won't get into the court case or anything like that.
That's fine.
Um, Director, do you have anything to, um...
I'm taking notes to make sure, you know, that we have, we, I'm gonna go back to the office and make sure that this between Paul and I, Dr. Paul and I, will, uh, consider some of these requests that has been made. And if there's a way out, you know, I'm sure that we'll get back to, uh, to you perhaps or to, uh, you know, the people that are requesting for you.
Yeah, Dr. Joseph?
I received this letter today, uh, and it's from Amy McCormick. Uh, and, uh, you know, we say things like, this was before O'Shea or after O'Shea, well, let me read this anyways. To whom it may concern, my name is Amy McCormick and in June two thousand and eleven, my family moved from Alaska to Guam. Our cat and dog, Poppet and Willis, had an overnight layover in Hawaii before arriving in, on Guam on June twenty nine. Anticipating them might take a couple of days to get their paperwork in order for release, I had already scheduled employment to visit them at Harper Kennel, Kennels the following morning at nine thirty AM. When I got to the quarantine facility at nine thirty, there was no one there. So I walked up to the house on the property and mind you, there's supposed to be double fences locked. A woman answered the door and said that the kennel, thank you ma'am, and said that the kennel attendant was still sleeping. Finally, she woke him and he staggered to the door groggy and only partially dressed. Welcome to Harper Kennels. Five or ten minutes later, I met him down by the boarding facilities. When I saw my cat, Poppet, she was hunched up in a ball in the back of her kennel and didn't come forward to greet me, which I thought was odd. I saw there was water and food in the kennel, but no litter box. That's technically animal cruelty according to our laws, by the way. Uh, I asked the caretaker why there was no litter box. He took a box from a nearby vacant kennel, poured out the soil contents, hosed it off, poured fresh kitty litter inside and then placed it in my cat's kennel. Except for the use of hose water, the litter box presumably used by a previous cat had not even been sanitized before being placed in my own cat's kennel. Meanwhile, my cat was still hunched in a funny position, not moving. When I lifted her, she was so uncomfortable that she couldn't even straighten her legs. Once placed in the litter box, she immediately relieved herself. It was obvious she had not gone to the bathroom for a long time. So my cat had been on a seven plus hour flight with no kitty litter, then spent the night in the kennel without access to a litter box. Anyone who thinks it's okay for a cat to not have access to a clean place to relieve herself for twenty-four hours should not be running a kennel facility. Also, the litter box should have been properly sanitized before my cat used it. Now, let me tell you about my dog's experience. Of course, Willis was very excited to see me and so I asked the attendant if we could go to the area designated for visits. While walking to the play area, we passed other dogs in quarantine, including a huge rottweiler who was at least three or four times bigger than my dog. The first thing I noticed when we got inside the gated area for visits was huge piles of dog poop scattered all around the concrete. These piles were clearly several times bigger than what my own dog could produce. I thought of the rottweiler we had passed and I wondered if they were his. Also, there were puddles and trails of smelly urine on various spots of the concrete, which my dog walked through a few times while we attempted to play. If the dog who produced the urine and huge poop piles had any communicable diseases, my dog was now exposed to them. It isn't the purpose, isn't it the purpose of a quarantine facility to present, prevent the spread of disease? What is the point of the quarantine process if the animals are directly exposed to each other's bodily fluids and feces? I paid seven hundred and one dollars and fifty cents in fees, uh, and accord- according to my records, we paid seven hundred ninety-one dollars and fifty cents in fees for our pets to be neglected and placed in unsanitary conditions, possibly exposing them to other animals' diseases. This is not acceptable. Also, coming from Alaska, we should have had the option of air-conditioned kennels to help them adjust from a cold climate to Guam's hot and humid weather. In the future, I hope Guam Department of Agriculture will find a clean, safe and climate-controlled facility for pets arriving on island. Unfortunately, a quarantine facility with these standards is currently not available to the public. Amy McCormick. Okay, now I'd like to point out a few things on here besides the unsanitary conditions and et cetera. I have an enclosed, uh, facility that is climate-controlled. You can't have that without concrete walls. You cannot control the climate. Okay, we have air conditioning twenty-four seven, power backup, everything in the quarantine we are trying to get authorized. Okay? Um, in addition, do you realize that actually according to laws of Guam, it is illegal even to bring a pet to Guam? And I would call this government-sponsored animal cruelty. Because in order to bring an animal to Guam, there has to be a designated area where the animals arrive and the designated area must be approved by the Director of Agriculture. Such an area must be an enclosed room with an air conditioner. No such thing exists here. We are lucky that no animals have escaped. Most of the flights arrive in the morning, so we have not had any heat strokes. But I add a rules and Gov Guam rules basically state that you have to have a proper humane facility just for the arrival of them. Okay, this is how far we are being neglected for our pets and humane care, quality of care that you all seem to be talking about. It starts right at the airport, okay? Um, these are things that we just simply don't have and it is the Department of Agriculture's job. And I would state that when I was applying for the Department, for Territorial Vet, I was told that quarantine and the quarantine of dogs and the rabies control program is the number one position or job of the territorial veterinarian. And I do not believe that that job is being done by either the Director or Dr. Poole, okay? Um, this is what we are facing here on Guam, okay? These types of things. Uh, and you better believe that the public knows about this stateside, okay? Why do people like, uh, Mr. McSweeney end up talking to me? Because I have the guts, the chutzpah to stand up and say all these things, okay? When Dr. O'Shea refers to my cases in court, yes, I have won twenty-four cases against Gov Guam, they've won zero. The only pending case right now is my civil rights case where Dr. Titegway, that, Titegway and Poole and all the police officers and et cetera are gonna go down for civil rights violations for denying me my ability to work, okay? Uh, there is one other appeal going on which really has nothing to do much with my license, okay? And that's in front of the Supreme Court and will be heard in August. Outside of that, there is really nothing pending right now. The other matters are all dead and mute, okay? So when she talks about all these other things and laws and obeying the laws, all I've ever done is actually obey the law and ask other people to obey the laws. This has gone down to the point where they raided my place, they took the drugs from my place. Uh, the judge said that there was an illegal raid and they have not returned the drugs. And we have found out by police officers that, uh, have come forward that the drugs don't even exist in holding anymore and we're talking about ketamine, a street drug. That's why they won't return the drugs.
But they were ordered to release it?
Judge Perez ordered, said that what they did was illegal and et cetera. He commanded them to give me my CSR, okay? Why they're still holding them, does the judge, do we actually have to spend the money to have the judge go and sign a piece of paper that says, I decided this and now you have to obey it? That's an extra expense to the people of Guam, an extra duty for the judges, et cetera, okay? In the meantime, quite frankly, we're just letting these people hang themselves. Seventeen thousand client records have not been returned. And again, it was deemed an illegal raid and Judge Perez went to the extent of saying that these are violations of my civil rights. Judge Perez did not have to go into that length or that discussion. But he made it obvious that Gov Guam violated my civil rights. We're talking about, uh, we're possibly gonna bring in Lieutenant Governor, Chief of Police, fifteen cops, four cabinet-level officers, uh, uh, two or three people below Titegway and DP HSS and DPW for all this. I mean, we're talking about gutting the entire Gov Guam. Can you imagine what it would be like with fifteen less police officers as they violated my civil rights? My real answer to this is this couldn't be going on if it wasn't approved from the top. And if the top doesn't know this is going on and is letting it happen, it's still being approved by inaction. But let me get off my, uh, pedestal there. Um, again, back to all this stuff, the, uh, we have complaints just like Mrs. Mon- Mrs. McCormick's complaint. Going back to the days when the military was arguing to build their own quarantine. There were complaints back then about Harper Quarantine. Then we had, and she was given two years to fix it, like we already mentioned, and she hasn't. It was hit by Pong Tsang Wah and she hasn't repaired it. They talk about me getting all these licenses and permits. She has applied for absolutely zero to get her place refitted, okay? Um, we have numerous complaints. Dr. Post, who unfortunately couldn't be here today, will tell you about how her dogs got tick disease in quarantine and died. This is a place that's supposed to be free of this. This is a black eye on Guam, okay? And what I'm trying to do is make it so it's not a black eye. We live up to the modern standards, okay? Quarantine I have, as soon as it's authorized, we'll have cameras in every single cage so that the people can watch their animals at any time, anywhere on the internet. You heard them say that they paid seven hundred fifty-one dollars. Our bill on that, that would have been about two hundred and fifty. You heard Dr. Poole say he doesn't know why there's this big hullabaloo because there's not much money in it. I'll agree with him, there's not much money in quarantine, okay? Uh, however, if you are being given ten, twenty or more new clients a month, we are talking that quarantine is worth millions. If it wasn't worth so much, why would every vet be asking for it?
Did you hear my gun, ma'am?
In which case I'll take it.
You know, responsibly, responsibly, and that's the point. At this point, the judgments are not completely back and, and this is a due process, but the process can take a long time. So everyone has to make their own decisions, this is an election year and everybody should make their own decisions. There is many things to be considered here, but I believe that God will be the judge and everybody knows what they're doing in the spirit and in the law.
And, and I was gonna suggest to the Director in the, you know, in, in the ish, in the spirit of, um, transparency and open government, will you conduct a, a very public inspection of the current animal quar- animal quarantine facility and the proposed quarantine facility and then just submit your, publish your findings?
Definitely, uh, Senator, I will try my very best to, that's the first thing.
I mean, the law requires that the animal quarantine facility be inspected every thirty days. But what I'm saying is, can you just, after you develop your checklist, uh, that should be exactly what the law provides, I submit to you that the Department of Agriculture should have conducted the, the inspection and then you can, you know, the, the unfortunate position that Dr. Poole is in, Dr. O'Shea, he created it for himself. He, he should have had that checklist, which the law requires, inspect the facility and then say, because of this or that, we could not, uh, issue the, uh, we cannot go forward with the occupancy permit. So this is why it's been lagging for eight years. And so what I suggest is that you just, um, conduct a very public, uh, inspection, have the media there, have anybody who's, uh, interested there and, and do your inspection of both facilities. And at the same time, you know, we have to reconcile whether concrete wall is better than a eight-foot barbed wire fence and how's an animal gonna escape through a concrete wall? You know, so, so in those instances, we just have to recognize whether, I mean, maybe the laws are antiquated and maybe that's how we could do our job as senators to, to facilitate that. I know, but the reason why we've been going back and forth is because, you know, I'm, I'm relying on you and I don't really, I don't really have a, my overs- my position is oversight chair, you know, I don't roll with the, with an iron fist, I, I let my agencies be. And unfortunately, when it comes to this point, everybody's upset that, uh, you are told you're not doing your job, I'm told I'm not doing my job, and so we're both in a situation where something has to happen. And I'm not gonna adjourn this, uh, hearing and, and leave it to you to do something that you're supposed to do and then there's no follow-up, then all I'm giving is lip service. And so I really, I'm suggesting that the best remedy is to develop that checklist, right?
Right.
And then make sure that there's one standard and you hold both facilities to the same standard and you don't even have to have a surprise inspection, you, you can have it announced. Give him, give him seven days.
Senator, we'll do that, uh, like I say, we're just going by the law and whatever the law tells us. But if there's any changes that needs to be changed to, uh, you know, to better improve our facilities, uh, we'll be, you know, we'll, we'll support it.
Okay, let me...
May I, uh, I don't believe that you actually need to change your laws. I believe that the laws you have are very much in line with the ones from Hawaii, very much in line from other, uh, countries and et cetera, okay? It's not the laws that need to be changed, it's the administration of those laws, okay?
And, and unless we have a checklist, unless we have some procedure that's open and transparent, we would never know. And so I'm pleased that the Director is willing to, to do that, to make the check. And you, you have a suggested checklist that was provided to you. Uh, adopt a checklist and conduct an inspection of, of both facilities.
I'd also like to point out that we're talking about the law. The law requires any outdoor facility here in Guam to be inspected by an engineer to prove that it is typeful, improved appropriately, et cetera. No such inspection has ever, ever been done at Harper. And these people are sitting here telling me about the law that they want to enforce.
And Dr. O'Shea, DP, DPW has said that there's no occupancy permit for, for any animal quarantine facility.
Or her, or her hospital either.
So...
I would ask you, do you remember who you are? Do you remember what you're here to serve and the values that you're here to serve? That's very important. I know what I gave up to come back and do this now. If I'm going to be held to that standard, I would expect that he be as well. And I would be, I would expect that he would understand that someone that was born and raised here has the ability and the right to come back even though it's worlds away from where I was and I gave up a lot to come back to do this. Now, what are you prepared to do if the, 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 if it's necessary for you to respond financially? Dr. Joseph, are you prepared to leave if you have to? I am, if to make a point, I would be prepared to leave this island. It's just so that I can know that I did what I was asked to do by my sister who was all about the right thing. And I believe the right thing is so important for all, us to all remember. Regardless of how it comes about, uh, it, it just needs to happen and the spirit especially. Cause that is what is always going to be what rules the day.
Yeah, we are in full agreement with Dr. O'Shea. Uh, Director, how much time do you think you need?
For these things to be done?
Yeah.
Well, uh, give us maybe like another month, you know, because...
So within thirty days?
Thirty days, correct.
That is a month, so tomorrow, tomorrow you can announce that in thirty days, you will conduct an inspection of both animal quarantine facilities, one proposed and the other current?
Yes, that we can do.
You schedule that, so that way you announce it, everybody knows what the expectation is, you develop your checklist, we look at the checklist, we make sure it's one standard and you conduct your inspection, uh, in the, in the spirit of, uh, open and transparency and, and then you let the chips fall where they may.
May I just ask that... May I just ask that the, uh, checklist be put out?
She already said amen.
May I just ask that the checklist be put out seven or ten days in advance?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, so that, uh, there is an understanding and... And anyway, uh, Director, you heard Dr. Poole say that it's not difficult to develop the checklist. Okay, um, anything else, Dr. O'Shea? Thank, thank you for your comments, really. Uh, Mr. Sweeney?
I thank you. I'm very encouraged by the attitude, uh, and, and Senator, you got my vote.
Well... Well, setting that aside, I think more importantly is I just don't want any criticism. Uh, because the criticism is really directed at my committee in this legislature for not doing anything. And, and I explained to you how we got to this point over the last several years. Uh, Dr. Joseph, anything else?
I was wondering if anybody else wanted to speak. I mean, we've, uh, sort of taken up a lot of this.
Well, they, they're always welcome to submit testimony if, um, thank you, uh... Senator O'Shea?
Anyone who wants to speak?
Okay, just please come forward.
I'm the Jenny McSweeney. The animal dog is my dog. Just last time, the Dr. Harper, the problem. Just now, Dr. O'Shea said, she said, "Why?" Just asked, it's not his case. Because my dog already broke a neck. Nobody helped me. And then how can I ask, and the dog already, the muscle already swing already. And then I just asked, nobody tell me. And then she give on say, "It's dog, I take a home broken leg." And then already operation is a dog, already take the picture, everything already, dog already several weeks already. That's why I asked the doctor, Joseph, he told me, said this dog have this problem. You know, for me, I'm just come island here long time, almost twenty years. But I love animal. The problem now, no much choice, only one choice, do the Dr. Harper there. And then he go there, my dog have a freeze, I need to buy the freeze, test, test. Everything just medicine go there. Shower need to pay. I pay quarantine fee already. I still need to pay this money. Why? Make me confused. That's why now I need to, even have more choice, I can choose. Same, I go restaurant, I, what, what I go, right? Now, no choice. I bring two dog, other one dog already broken leg. Now still to go to quar, no pay me.
Okay.
Sorry. Thank you so much. Uh, I'm just people, very, very not happy. I'm just take this case.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so there's...
I'm, uh, Rosanna Fernandez. I'm employed at Weizel. No disrespect, Dr. O'Shea, but, um, you said you came back for, uh, I guess to give back to the community, okay? Um, then you also said that we're all, everybody needs to, I guess, business-wise, you know? Everybody needs to get paid, make a living, um, and so are we. And that's why, in all fairness, really, uh, with the laws and everything, um, Department of Agriculture, you know, we need to follow that because everyone needs to make a living. Dr. Joseph has, um, employed twenty-five of us, you know? And, uh, without this, you know, with everything that he's going through, if we lose our jobs, you know, so, I mean, I just hope that this can be resolved, okay? Uh, that we follow the laws if, if that's what we're saying we're going by, okay? Um... I'm torn right now, so, sorry.
I would just respond...
But I, I'd just like to, you know, I mean...
That's, yes, I understand, and I would just tell you that I, I really believe in this community, and I believe that we can do the right thing the right way, but in this right spirit at all times that undergirds everything legally, in the world even. That's my belief, and I believe Guam believes that. That's why I came back. And I hope that that's what we've been able to convey, uh, as a result of the status hearing, right? So if there's no one else that's wishing to, you, you're always welcome to submit, um, testimony, but, uh, I wanna say, you okay? So I want to say that this committee is in recess till tomorrow. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry, ma'am. Just state your name.
Gina.
Gina. Your last name?
Petrachi.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm, I'm not begging. I'm pleading that you follow through with the Department of Agriculture. Um, for the years that I've worked at Weizel, sadly, I witnessed animals have come out from Harper Valley, literally walking into the clinic with ticks falling off of their bodies. I have seen pet owners grieve because their animals come in, they're healthy, and then when they come out of the Harper Valley, they have some sort of disease, tick disease, and it's heartbreaking. I own a few pets, and I, I love them as if they were my own children. And for us to constantly fight this battle and seems like no one listening, and, and so, and so I'm very, very grateful that you guys are here to hear what our concerns and what we have to say. So I'm pleading with you, Ms. Director, if you can actually see to it that you meet your thirty days.
Or we'll be back right here again, yeah. Okay, thank you for your testimony. Uh, we're gonna be, if there's no other testimony from the members of the public, we're going to be in recess till tomorrow at five thirty, and the Director gets to come back to give us a status update on the indigenous fishing rights. It's another, uh, area which this legislature was waiting for the, uh, the rules and regs. And so we get to discuss that tomorrow. I want to thank all of you for your participation, and that's Director. Thirty days. Announce the inspection tomorrow. Thank you, everybody.